Let's call this meeting the order of the Lathfield Village Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. We'll start with a roll call.
Chairman Hammond.
Here.
Vice Chair Stansberry.
Present.
Secretary Forbes.
Here.
Commissioner Disick.
Here.
Commissioner Cantor.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamorelli.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great.
Okay, we have our agenda before us, so I'll entertain, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda or to modify the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. We'll move on to approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes for the meeting of December 20th, 2022. If anybody has any edits to the minutes, and if not...
I have one question. In the minutes, it talks about a public hearing for the waste and rubbish ordinance. Should that have been tonight, or is that at council? I can never keep straight which ones go where.
It was supposed to be this evening, and we just weren't able to get it published in time.
Yeah. So next time?
It will be, yeah, February's looking full, so if you're not going to be here, please let me know as soon as possible, but that'll be on for February.
All right.
So it doesn't sound like there's an edit to the minutes, because it was accurate as posted from the meeting, but just know that it didn't follow through for this meeting. We'll have that in February. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for 12, 20, 20, 22.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and the meeting minutes are approved. We'll now open up for public comment. This is public comment for anything not on the agenda, anything that is on the agenda, anything anybody in the public would like to share with us. Great, we'll close out the public comment portion of the agenda and move on to old business and tabled items, which, based on the agenda, it looks like there are none.
Correct.
So we'll move on past that to our order of new business, which is review of the amended site plan and request for approval of amended site plan for the property at 26727 Southfield Road, which is the BP gas station.
So, this is actually new for some of you. This has been, this has been a project that's been a long time in the works, and we had discussed this the last time back in, oh gosh, April, March of last year. And I'll be honest, I had a misrecollection of that meeting, and after kind of talking it through and reviewing my notes again, it was clear that that was a misunderstanding of my part. So, we had talked about the placement of the storage tanks. You may recall that they had unfortunately been installed under the city's, were encroaching into the city's right-of-way. We had met with the property owner, Tarek Gayar, and he'd come before you in March to talk about an alternative solution, and we did come up with a really good idea to do the stacked pavers for the wall, because as part of that process, we had learned that the footings for the required wall were going to be in conflict with the tanks. So, fast forward several months, Mr. Gayar figured out that it was not necessarily worth the headaches to keep the tank in that location, so the tank has been relocated and is now entirely on his property. However, there is still the issue of footings for that screen wall impacting the tanks. So, the stacked pavers, they are there. I hope you've all had an opportunity to drive past and look. Mr. Gayar has brought us a sample of that stacked paver material. You will need to approve the site plan, or consider approving the amended site plan, I guess is a better way to look at it. But this is really for you to, you know, to take action on. And then, one other thing that has been added to the site plan are two electric vehicle charging stations. I don't know if you all recall, but also during that meeting in March, that was right around the same time we were beginning to take off that language, and Mr. Gayar had said that he was interested in installing those, and so those have been installed, and those are reflected on the as-built plans that were in your packet. So there's no specific action to necessarily take on the chargers, but our big concern when reviewing the amended site plan was that we did not lose any required parking. So, I think that pretty much captures it. Eric, did I get everything?
That's everything that I'm aware of, yep.
All right. Tarek, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Nope.
Come on up to the table, and then we can, we'll allow them to start peppering you with any questions they may have.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tarek Gayar, one of the owners of LV Petro, which owns this project and putting that gas station together. I know it's been a long journey and big financial burden on our back, but hey, we finally decided to just resolve the matters by spending a bit more. We're to the 11th hour of the project, and we had to relocate the tank inside the property so we don't have to have an issue with the city or the state of Michigan approval. We still have the tank sitting in the same position, but inside the property, right next to the wall, that three-foot wall. So, I took advantage of your March approval, which was a brilliant idea with the landscaping bricks, that does not require a four-feet-deep footing, that will be in conflict with or putting pressure on the fiberglass tank, and the state will have a problem with that. So, we already did that, and I believe we met at the site with Susan and Eric and Jill, and they have required the as-built survey and pointing the, specifically the wall and the electric charging, and we did that, and I'm here for the approval. We can get the project opened.
So any questions I had about the EV charging stations, I assume that they, we have zoning ordinances in place for EV charging stations. I assume there was a review of the installation of those to make sure that they're installed in compliance with the zoning ordinances?
Yes, they are, and they did, they were installed after the zoning ordinance, and yes, the permit is, the permit was pulled appropriately, everything's been reviewed. I think there's one final step is, you know, it needs to be finalized out, and, you know, we can get that resolved as he continues to call for finals on the building overall.
Okay, great, that's good news. The only note that was in the memo from Giffords Webster in our packet was about we might wish to discuss the effectiveness of additional vegetation and its ability to screen the parking areas from Southfield and Coral Gables. Based on what's in this plan, which I know is not what's actually there right now, some of it's there, I drove by there today, but it looks like it's sufficient. The wall is there, and, you know, you do need, it's a three-foot wall, and we need to be able to see into the area and out of the area in order to pull into and out of the gas station itself. It looks fine to me.
We're still missing some mulch and some bushes to the inside of the wall, some decorative touch. Of course, we're going to have to wait for the spring to be able to enhance this landscaping a bit, and of course, correct whatever is missing, spots of the grass area that is weather permitting, of course.
Yeah, and I noticed the sprinkler system that's being installed on the outside of the wall is there, the piping's there, obviously you have to wait for the spring.
To correct that as well, or else we'll not have any water for that.
Yeah, but it's good to know that that's there, right? So that'll help maintain the look and health.
It was a miscoordination between the sprinkler system guy and the wall guy, so...
Happens, right?
Have to do the job twice.
And what's with the sign? I know at one point we were talking about there was going to be a various request for the sign, or is that going to be for the ZBA, or?
Yes, the sign, we met, we met with Tarek in mid-December, and the sign was part of that. We are, we need, we're working on getting a complete sign package to make sure that that's the only variance he needs, is the location and determine, you know, that everything else is, you know, within, within those signed standards. So, we are working towards the February date for that, February, I think that's the 27th.
Third, 20th? Yeah, whatever.
It's towards the end of the month, I know that. So, we are working towards that for zoning board of appeals.
And where it's shown on the as-built, that's where we approved it initially, right?
No, the as-built shows no sign.
Yeah, there's no sign.
But he kind of like told us what is there now, because the sign was not installed yet. So, the sign location was proposed in the March meeting on the same plan, which is supposed to be in the corner of that wall. And the current problem we are facing is meeting the ordinance of the height of the monument sign, which is six feet high from the ground. And if you allow me to consider this table as the wall, and it goes this way along Southfield Road, and this is Carl Giv, and the sign will be sitting here, and three feet or more, it depends how far the vehicle is looking at that sign, is going to be hidden by that wall that we had to install, because that location is the 10 feet away from the property line. So, we're going to be asking for, and I checked all the neighbors around the area, the two sides of the road actually, they're like right by the property line, so zero feet variance. So if we move that sign away from the wall to between the property line and the wall itself, it fits perfectly, and it shows from both directions, north and southbound. And of course, as a gas station, the gas price is something crucial for the customers to come in or not, because nobody won't come in knowing how much he's paying for the gallon. So, that's what we're going to be visiting the location of the sign.
The landscape plan does show a placement for the monument sign that's not at that location, that's why you asked the question. So, it just needs to be reflected in the landscape plan.
We'll get that modified. Once, once Tarek's got that whole, the as-built will be updated to reflect the landscaping and the signage.
Makes sense. And Susie, you said the installation of the EV charging stations does not reduce the number of available parking lots below the required, the number required by the ordinance?
No, and this is something Eric and I went over probably thousands of times, because we were making...
I count it.
Huh?
I count it.
You count it. Yeah, there's one big space, right? It's just one big space. I was like, Eric, I'm going to go count.
Actually...
Took 10 seconds, nothing was, nothing was striped when I went out there, right? I was like, all right, so there's one big spot.
Actually, Eric's email, which is very professional, it shows that extra space that we left.
Yes.
And the as-built survey does not. He actually used that area, he copied it from the original. Had he showed that three feet that we pushed to accommodate this charger, so if we do that, this charger is coming exactly between the two, here's the three feet that we gained moving this line here.
Yeah.
So, and you show that three feet here, but, and that shows that the charger is in the middle of the parking space, actually it's going to be between the two cars, and we're not missing any spaces with that three feet move that we did.
Yeah, so in summary, we did do an analysis based on the dimensions, the width of parking spaces, and they would maintain compliance of the minimum parking requirements for the site with the EV charger where it is.
The landscape plan also shows where now in the as-built plan, it shows the transformers and electrical boxes. There was proposed landscaping in that area before, so that landscaping's no longer there because the electrical boxes are there.
We installed some trees in that area where the transformers are, but I think it's for our benefit as well to probably get some arborite or something, and then cover that with some green screening, so that will look more natural.
Yeah.
Hey, how are you?
So we'll be doing that in the spring as well.
Yeah, I mean...
We're adding the bushes by the wall, we can add those.
Sure. Personally, I think the biggest concern would be the residents on the opposite side of the right-of-way and the alleyway, but there's a wall there that's already been built
Six feet.
That provides, that provides that screening already. The transformers and electrical boxes are shorter than that wall, so it's...
And we have, we have discussed previously the property immediately behind the building itself, there's, you know, there's kind of like a double fence action happening there, and there's some space between that, and we've talked, Tarek and I before, about making sure that that space between those two fences is maintained by, you know, maintained by BP, whether it's that mowing or installing some sort of river rock to prevent weeds coming up, and we've talked about that, because that neighbor has had some drainage issues. So we've had a discussion, and then the last little bit, the planning commission really doesn't have, you don't really have, it's not within your purview, but it is the stormwater maintenance agreement, and once, you know, once we get everything finalized here and lots combined, that's going to be one of his final tasks to do, if you will. So...
Great. All sounds good.
Yeah.
Does any, any of the other commissioners have additional questions?
Just a couple. The landscape plan that you provided the print of versus the plan in the packet, which is closest to the site as it stands today?
Uh...
Or is there a third as-built or that is not in front of it?
The as-built, the as-built that was in your packet is the most current. However, that, the as-built really should have some of this landscaping on here, because there is landscaping out on site. There's several of these, I think, at least a few, a couple of these trees out front along Southfield Road, those are out there, there are some bushes out there. So the as-built plan just needs to really be updated to reflect the, that the landscaping is in existence on that, on the site.
So the transformers extend beyond the wall?
There are, the transformers are, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Tarek, the transformers are actually in the, the north west corner...
Right.
Of the parcel along, along Coral Gables, along Southfield Road, there's a, two or three small exhaust pipes from the, from the tanks.
Right, and those are beyond the L of the end of the landscape wall, it looks like.
Those are...
Located north of the furthest point of the landscape wall?
No, those are just east of the wall along Southfield.
Yeah, east, but...
In the plan, it doesn't look like the wall goes as far as it does. In reality, the wall does go...
Oh, it does, okay.
Almost all the way to Coral Gables.
So that's what we're saying, is that then that wall, that's an empty in this current...
You're right.
Yeah, I drove by there today, the wall does go almost to the sidewalk at Coral Gables.
Okay, all right, all right.
Those transformers and boxes that you see on the plan are hidden from, to the, I guess, from the west, right?
If you're looking from the west, directly west of the transformers, there is a wall.
Yeah.
Okay. The only other thing I'd say is I commend you on the EV transformers or charging stations. I recently attended a General Motors talk on kind of the future strategy of General Motors and electronic vehicles, and I think it's a really smart move. So thank you for doing that, and I'm curious, are they type 1, type 2, type 3 chargers, do you know?
Yep, actually, they're the fastest available in the market.
Wonderful.
I said, might as well get the most...
You will not regret that, if what GM believes is going to happen, is going to happen, so...
Absolutely. And we, generally, we are losing some gas volume, and I see it, I drive a Tesla myself, so I see that it's, every year's increasing, and I have to somehow accommodate that, or else I'll be out of business, so, even for my business, it's better.
Hey, Bo, grab your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. My...
That's all I have.
Now they want you to repeat it all over again.
Do you want me to repeat it?
No.
Hopefully it came through well.
It probably came through, but for the overall quality.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, well, then, it doesn't sound like there are any adjustments that need to be made to, the site plan's been presented to us, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the amended site plan.
Make a motion to approve the amended site plan, the as-built?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and the amended site plan's reviewed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gayar.
Thank you very much, guys, you're very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, the next agenda item is other matters for discussion, and the topic is the development project updates, which we've asked Susie to provide to us at each meeting.
Yeah.
And this is, I'm really glad to see that this is continuing, and we've got this to review.
Yeah, I, I've already made a couple notes for myself, like add a header, that would be maybe, I don't know, nice, figure out how to put it into... Thanks. Put the knees. So, obviously I need to add a header, figure out how to put it into Muni code, so it shows up as a spreadsheet and not an odd jumble of what, and so it's due to revision, but I think this captures the comments that we had, you had, you all had last, last month, added some notes, and I did take off the projects that were completely totally donezo.
Great.
I can change that around if you'd prefer, and maybe keep the totally donezo ones on there, and just done? I don't know, you, you tell me, that we do have a new one on here, and that will actually be for zoning board of appeals, and that's our Charles Dotson for the ZBA, but I guess that's another question, do you want the ZBA things on here since it's not part of the planning commission?
Yeah, I think it's good for us to know that, you know, we...
Or is it comprehensive?
Yeah, if we're, you know, I mean, that specific project isn't one that we had any oversight for, didn't come before the planning commission, didn't need to, but it's good to know that it's happening, and...
If we see a lot of them, then it knows that we need to make some changes.
We might need to change the ordinances, exactly, right.
Right.
So, yeah, I think it's helpful, anything that's going before the ZBA gets presented here. As far, I think it's a good idea to archive somewhere the completed projects...
Right.
In a separate document that's archived, but that we have access to in some way, shape, or form.
Sure.
How we get access to it, you guys will have to figure out, because there is no, like, shared cloud storage that the commissioners have access to.
Correct.
I guess we could, you could store it someplace, and we could ask you for it if we need access to it, but it should be stored somewhere so we can keep track of, yeah, these are the projects that were reviewed and approved and completed and are now completely off of our oversight, but then it's there if we need to go back and review it for some reason. So I don't think you need to keep completed projects on this report.
Okay.
And just to that point, one of the things that we talked about last being was, like, Panera's a good example, the task or initiative may be completed, but the project is not built.
Correct.
And so maybe having a flag, even if it's a small little, that we know that it's actually done-done, meaning it's actually built, or...
Okay.
Versus actually demolition, or what have you, or is ZBA...
Yeah, so like the month in which a project is actually completed, 100%, it should still be on this report with some note of notice, some check mark, something that tells us that it's done, and that would fall off the report for the following month's meeting, and go into this archive report.
Like, I'm going to look at Panera probably until it's actually completed, completed, to see where it's at, but according to this, it's technically going to be completed once DTE gets their backlog out of the way, right? So those are the things.
Yes, yes, yeah, okay.
For what it's worth, I mean, a one-page report is great.
It is.
If we keep it to one page, the projects that are open, the projects that maybe have most recently completed, it's good, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, it being a one-pager, it might be simplest from a manipulation standpoint to just simply put it, you know, either export it into Excel, rather than, you know, without knowing what you have to do with the other program, you know? I mean, let's keep it as simple as possible, but helpful for what we want, so, I don't know, I mean, if you have to do gyrations to create this, to take stuff off, I mean, it may be, you know, this is 15 lines of text, right? It might be simplest to just have that.
I, you know, my mom always told me to stop gyrating, but I can't help myself, so excellent wordies, but, no, I think actually this was a lot, this was actually a lot easier once I was able to actually export it from the program. I don't think I could figure out how to do this necessarily in that program, it's a lot easier to manipulate this way, so...
I mean, we don't exactly add projects each week, so if you have to manually put one in and the next, you know...
Yeah, it works out.
My vision is it for it to be a book, not a one-page. That's my vision.
That's the goal.
I have different visions.
Now we're in business.
Kind of a vision.
Hopefully, hopefully, yeah.
Exactly. I said hopefully.
I'm slow on the uptake, yeah.
There are a few items, lab field investments.
Yeah.
The site plan approval has expired. What are we waiting on, like, why are they still on the list?
They're still, so the city is being sued by this particular top priority.
Okay.
And so, as part of that discussion last week, or last week, last month about keep these projects on that are still, you know, so they're still on the radar, this is still on the radar. They still have, they did not complete any of the items that were approved by the planning commission, for example, dumpster enclosures, right? So, knowing that, you know, certainly can't check them off, right? But to Will's point of keeping them on the list, I think this is, just keep, keep watching them, and then when they optimistically come back to get site plan approval again...
Got it, okay.
Yeah, it's not unusual, doesn't happen very often, but it's not unusual for, like, a property to get acquired, and then the new property owner to want to make some updates to it that require planning commission review and a site plan review and approval. It's also not uncommon for things to happen, and the project ends up running longer than the site plan approval period expiration date. So when the expiration occurs, it has to come up to us for review again and approval to extend the site plan expiration date. So, when those types of things are happening, then these kind of projects need to, I think, they need to be on this report.
I agree, yeah.
Well, and BP is a really good example, right? I mean, he got his site plan, or his specialty and use approval literally the day I was introduced to city council, that will be five years, right, on February 4th, but he has made consistent progress, I mean, yes, like, if you just go based on, like, our site plan expires every year if we've done nothing, right? But he has made consistent progress throughout that process to keep that site plan active and, and valid, so he does not have to come back to us.
You actually brought up a really key word, which is the word "active." Because there's litigation, to me, it's still active. If it were actually to lapse, because there's no extraneous type of situation, then it may be inactive, which may actually then bring up the point that I kind of forget about it until it comes back before us. But I consider everything on here active in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah, and this, these specific projects, the Ford Lathfield Partners projects, the site plan approval was required to come before us because of changes that they... the site plan approval was required to come before us because of changes that they needed to make and because of the change in ownership, and in order to bring the properties into compliance with the ordinance. So, that's great, we reviewed it and we approved it, and we said, yeah, this is going to keep you in compliance. But then, because of the active litigation, whatever other issues, they haven't actually done the work to complete the project and bring it into compliance, so we definitely want to keep eyes on this thing, so that at some point, they actually get into compliance.
Actually, one way or another, because of a lapse, or because things change, no matter what, it's going to have to come before us, just because of the timing. So I consider it active, no matter what happens with all the different stuff.